Some personal issues and Dr. Barnes has replaced him next to me. So at this time, I would accept a motion for the approval of agenda items with the caveats that I have already explained.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approved the July eleventh, twenty twenty-two agenda items as presented.
Support. With the motion by Ms. Shannon, seconded by Mr. Smith, is there any discussion on the side? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Excellent, we have an agenda. Next, I would entertain a motion for the approval of consent agenda items.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approved the July eleventh, twenty twenty-two consent agenda item as presented second.
Excellent, with a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Quina, there is no discussion on this item because it's consent agenda. I will note though that is, this consent agenda only contains the June twenty-seventh regular enclosed session minutes. And will all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And we approve the consent agenda.
I would like to note that we have approved or approved the consent agenda.
No worries. Awesome, reports. Dr. Glasgow, do you have a capital connections report for us?
Nine thousand dollars is a great figure for state foundation.
Excellent. I'll also note for everybody watching at home that this is the time of year when your legislative staff and people who want to be your legislative representatives are the most visible in your neighborhoods. They are out knocking doors and shaking hands and all that, and you should walk out and tell them how important public education is to you. Next, I would be interested in an education foundation.
I don't have an education foundation report, I expect it, well, I guess here's the report. I expect us to meet soon to discuss how to handle our grant approval process, given how successful our fundraiser was this year, but we don't have a meeting set yet.
Excellent. And then a bond update. Dr. Johnson.
Well, thanks for having me again this evening, again, saved by the bell. John, I think there's a phone off someplace in the building that's causing that peep every once in a while, nonetheless. I was here two weeks ago, not a lot's changed since then, just a couple of updates real quickly. The Beagle pool, the asphalt paving on the bus loop should be completed this week Friday. Landscapers should complete this project by the end of July, so we should be in good shape. High school track punchless, punchless items are about the only work to be completed. If you've been by there, the grass is coming in very well, especially in the irrigated areas on the north end. That's where the throwing areas are, the grass is really coming in very quickly. Of course, we had a lot of trouble getting going on the track this spring because of too much rain. Now we could actually use a little rain to make the grass grow better. High school fine arts, work at the high school continues to move on schedule, no other updates. High school pool, aside from some painting that will be completed this week, community pool work is pending the upcoming punch list, which we all will do next week, the walkthrough. About the center edition, the bid documents are due, I said, July nineteenth, they're actually extended to July twenty-first. It's hoped to have a complete list of contractors for approval at the next board meeting on August eighth. And finally, the Cousteau, we have a schematic design budget review meeting this Thursday to help determine our next steps at Cousteau.
Well, that's my report. Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, a superintendent for Dr. Barnes.
Alright, so we have listed on the agenda just an update about our Neola policy implementation. So Dr. Davenport asked that we give an update tonight, just so everybody's on the same page as to where we are. As a reminder, we started this back in August of twenty twenty-one, so it's been almost a full year now when we first started to talk about it, and the board approved going with Neola. So the central office team has been working with those policies, and I know that Dr. Davenport has been working with the representative from Neola as well throughout the process. But we meet regularly, most, most of the time it's been weekly throughout the, the spring to review the policies. And our team is close to finalizing the review, at which point we'll pass all that off to the board governance committee for their final review and report. It's important to note that this hasn't been a small task. So the, what's listed on the agenda for tonight are all of the different categories that Neola policies have, and then within those, there's a multitude of policies depending on the category. So each one, we've taken time to review and look at language. For a couple of things, one is to ensure alignment with district practice, so does this line up with what we're currently doing? If it's not lined up with what we're currently doing, understanding the need to either update our district practice. But if we do that, also examining the impact on staff, students, families, and district operations with implementation of those new policies. So anytime you implement a new policy, you want to make sure that you have processes and procedures to actually fully implement it. So that's been part of our conversation as well. So it's also important for the board and the community to note that until those are brought forward for approval and then implementation, the board and the district continues to operate under our current policies, which are available on the district website under the Board of Education. But I think the board and the community will see when we get to that point that the Neola policies are very detailed, they're numerous, and they're very. So that's, that's where we are in that process right now. The team is meeting later this week for our next review session and to bring our new team members up to speed as to what we've done.
Thank you. Brings us to public comment. Just to be willing to read the rules.
Good evening, everyone, even though it's a smaller group, I'll just stay consistent and go through all the, all of the rules. Persons may address the board for up to three minutes in the public comment segment of the meeting by providing your name and jurisdiction on one of the public comment forms provided at the sign-in table, and then turning it into the superintendent's assistant. Meeting chair will use the public comment form submitted to invite persons to come forward to make their public comment at the appropriate time. Board meetings are constructed to conduct necessary business of the board while also allowing time for the public to express concerns and opinions. Out of respect for board members, students and staff, you'll be interrupted if you personally attack a board member or a district employee on issues unrelated to their job performance. Mention a student's name when discussing behavior or other incidents, or engage in discussion with other members of the audience. You will be reminded when you're approaching the end of your three-minute limit, so you can conclude with your strongest points. Board will not respond to questions or comments during the public comment period, but superintendent or assistant superintendent will do his best to answer questions at the end of the meeting. If immediate answers aren't available, arrangements will be made to provide you with the information requested.
First up this evening, we have Ashley Kikindal of Grand Ledge.
Good evening. In the past few board meetings, there's been a lot of discussion around facilities and infrastructure, along with multiple references to school safety from the public. Back in December twenty twenty-one, I sent an email to the school administration inquiring about emergency practices and engagement for parents. How's the district establishing and sustaining emergency management expectations with parents and guardians? When will the district plan to create awareness with parents and guardians and receive feedback from the community? I would also like to hear more about how the district plans to implement the financial literacy expectation that's established by House Bill fifty-one ninety. I do have some concerns about the reduction in required foreign language credits and would hope the district would consider an effective balance for literacy, for financial literacy and foreign language. I would also like to raise concerns I've been hearing as I've been making my way around in the community. Again, regarding the bus routes for students, I've talked to several parents who have concerns similar to mine of their kindergarten through second grade is having a forty-five-minute one-way bus ride to get to school. I recognize the district has struggled with bus driver shortages for years, but it's important to keep the duration of time travel for children in mind, especially when they're so young. I've also heard concerns regarding engagement and discipline of special education and differently-abled students. Parents and guardians have struggled with the lack of responsive and effectiveness from some people that they've worked with. And in addition to all of these things, current high schoolers and recent graduates have repeatedly mentioned the desire for access to more CTE onsite that doesn't require students attending Eaton Reeser. I won't pretend to have all the answers, but these concerns are very real for the parents and students who are sharing them. Grand Ledge is a good district with an opportunity to keep doing better, let's focus on being better. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, that concludes public comment, move to old business. Particularly the pre-bond work at Delta Center. Probably moved by Dr. Glasgow and seconded by Mr. Smith, is there any discussion on the side?
Yes, I'd like to add it to the record of that, given that we exercised our bid process however. Due to the urgency of getting this work done, acquired school funding, which puts impact teaching alone. We need to afford it quickly and to afford the dollars and Dr. Bonds' will. And Dr. Davenport's assets. My biggest concern is that the bidding process actually will slow down the work that needs to be done. And we've investigated this thoroughly as a bond committee so that we know that there are not qualified, there are very few qualified individuals of a big company that have been represented to do this. I would like for that to show in the record so that.
That's, that's an excellent summary of what we were, we just discussed. One of those vendors being the Board of Water and Light as being the only qualified entity that can handle this transformer work that needs to be done as well. And as noted, if we don't do this this summer, we'll delay the entire bond process for Delta Center by a year.
Is there any other discussion on the side? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And motion passes. Which I would now entertain a motion, motion for the approval of the easement for the same project.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education grant a permanent easement to the city of Lansing by its Board of Water and Light to enter in the district's property located at three zero five South Canal Road and authorize Superintendent Marcus Davenport or his designee to execute the easement for underground electric facilities as presented.
With the motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Shannon, is there any discussion on this item? Just, I'll just, I'll know that this is the same project as the previous item, but it requires a separate motion because it is the approval of an easement for the project.
And there's a current easement already that it'll be replaced with this one as part of the new bond project and new infrastructure.
Excellent, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That ends old business, on to new business. Would entertain a motion, motion for the approval of an employee contract.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approved the employee contract with the Building and Grounds Maintenance Association as presented.
Probably moved by Ms. Shannon, seconded by Mr. Quina, is there any discussion on the side?
I would just, I would just note that they're in your board packet. Mr. Mrs. Waterbury has done a great job of providing a synopsis of some of the updates, also the contract itself. So great work by Mrs. Waterbury and the team to, to get that with the group together, and like I said, it's in your board packet.
Any other discussion?
It's, it's my understanding that most of the changes were to kind of make things a little bit more uniform across groups in terms of.
Yes, that is the case, and as a matter of fact, what we've done is, is scheduled it so that contracts of like employee groups are expiring at the same time so that we can have discussions across groups and try to work even more towards more uniformity.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Now I would entertain a motion for the food service invoice.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approved the payment of a food service invoice from Stafford Smith in the amount of nineteen thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Shannon, is there any discussion on the side?
I'll just note, obviously, this is part of our bond advisory group meeting, go over these invoices and updates on the project. This is the, not the last payment for food service at Beagle, Beagle School.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Alright, let's pay off the food service. Next, I would entertain a motion for the payment of capital funded invoices.
I'll move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approved the payment of capital funds invoices in amount of forty-one thousand one hundred and four dollars and eighty cents as presented.
Moved by Mr. Quina, seconded by Dr. Glasgow, is there any discussion on this item?
Yep, these are capital fund eligible costs related to the fine arts at the high school.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And. Now I would entertain a motion for the payment of proposal one, series one bonded invoices. Moved by Ms. Shannon, seconded by Dr. Glasgow, is there any discussion on the side?
Making sure I keep track of my notes and series here. Yep, this is a specific payment to GMB Architects, and this is just a monthly payment, which is for proposal one, series one, that either wraps up or nearly wraps up the final payment to them for this project.
Any others? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Alright, passed. Having watched medical TV shows, like a solid flat lighting sound is, yeah, that's disturbing.
It finally has had enough.
And this, and this doctor, as Marcus Shane on vacation, that gets perfect time.
And I'll just keep it moving.
Yeah. Alright, I would entertain a motion for the payment of proposal one, series two bonded invoices.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approve the payment of proposal one, series two bond invoice to Clark Construction Company in amount of twenty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents as presented.
Moved by Mr. Quina, seconded by Dr. Glasgow, is there any discussion on the side?
Yep, these are, these are design and planning costs related both to Delta Center and La Cuesta. They're, obviously, their construction is upcoming.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Next, I would entertain a motion for the payment of proposal two, series one bonded invoices.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approve the payment of a proposal two, series one bond invoices in the amount of two hundred eighty-seven thousand eighty-five dollars and twenty-three cents as presented.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Quina, is there any discussion on the side?
Yep, I just double checked, these are both the pools, Beagle and High School. High School being operational at this point, but there's still some wrap-up. Punchless items being finished up.
Any other discussion? None, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And motion passes. Last item of new business, I would entertain a motion for the payment of proposal two, series two bonded invoices.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approve the payment of proposal two, series two bond invoices in the amount of one million sixty-three thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars and eleven cents as presented.
Moved by Ms. Shannon, seconded by Mr. Quina, is there any discussion on the side?
Lastly, and that's the big number because that's, that's where the construction is the most active right now, remaining items for the high school track and construction for fine arts at the high school.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And motion passes. That brings us to comments from staff and board. It is generally been tradition that staff goes first, so hop in.
I just wanted to provide a little follow-up to our, on the June twenty-seventh meeting when we were talking about the food service meal charge policy, and there was comments made that there had been some legislation passed shortly before that meeting that extended some of the free, free meal pricing. Just wanted to follow up that that extension actually is only, at this point, is only good through the end of September. So what that means is that we will still need, I'm glad that we adopted that policy because it still will be in play effective October first, and as will the meal prices that the board approved. So we will work on publishing that information so that families have that available to them. And in the meantime, we will keep our ear tuned to see if any further extensions happen.
Someone who like works in legislative policy, like has a vocation, starting something after the first month of school has already commenced is shockingly silly. Like, I mean.
Well, that's.
It's a huge problem.
That's when they're, it's their fiscal year, not our fiscal year, and unfortunately, that's our reality in, in many cases. This extension benefited, certainly for the summer months, it benefited schools that were doing a summer food service program. We are not doing that program, we had alternatively planned in connection with summer school to provide snack, not, not an official meal, but a snack that we are paying for out of some of our ESSER funding, so it doesn't apply to us, at least for this, but for the month of September. Yes, you're right, John, it's going to be horribly complicated that families are going to receive free meals for September, but then come October first, you got to pay for it. So that, that's, luck Mr. Ellsworth, I'm sure he's going to help us craft that message well. Alright.
Just a couple of things, I know in, in the spiel there before, public comment, you said that the assistant superintendent could answer a couple of the questions. So I do have a couple of answers to Ms. Kikindal's questions. One regarding the implementation of finance, financial literacy class. A bill was just passed that requires all high school graduates to take a financial literacy course. That doesn't take effect until the fall of twenty twenty-four. But I know Dr. Wright and I have already had a conversation about it, he has a plan to do that, we have some courses that actually meet that requirement, so it's just a matter of ramping up those to ensure that all students meet that graduation requirement. In addition, I, I just wanted to make note that Ms. Kikindal mentioned the emergency management, emergency management plan. We're in the process right now, as the administrative team are reviewing our current emergency management plan and making sure that it's up to date in accordance with the rules and recommendations from our law enforcement partners. So that's, that process is in works. And I'd also like, like to point out too, in terms of CTE, and I know that's, that's a question we get asked quite a bit about CTE onsite. We're, we're very lucky in Eaton County to have the benefit of partnering with Lansing Community College in Eaton Reeser. All of our students that go through our vocational program through LCC and Eaton Reeser earn college credits and certificates for their careers. So a student, for example, may be a certified welder at the end of their time and also have seventeen college credits that they didn't pay for. And so we're, we're fortunate that we're able to have that partnership that allows us to, to do some of those things. But that being said, we're always looking for unique opportunities for students as well, and there is a process by which you add a career and technical education program to your high school, but it's a long process that usually takes considerable amount of time and partnership. So we're always on the lookout for good opportunities and are in the midst of conversations with our partners at Eaton Reeser about some of those, but I, I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of what that process is. And then the last thing, there, I know there are a couple of other things on that list that don't fall under my jurisdiction, but we'll look into those and get back, I wrote those down here. I do also want to point out that over here, to my left, we have some new faces along our table over here. And so, so Wendy and Kelly both started last week, and so have been in the district for a week and have done outstanding job already. They asked very good questions, they've looked at a lot of our systems, and I'm really excited about what the future holds with them on board on our team. We had our first full cult meeting this morning with them and spent a lot of time just talking about systems and why we do things and how we do things and how we could do things better. So I think having these folks on our team, in addition to obviously Julie and John and, and the rest of our administrative team and the rest of our staff, we're looking forward to a really great, great school year with some wonderful additions to our team. So even Martez, our new operations director, was in the district today touring buildings, and he'll be starting officially next week as well. So, so some new faces in leadership around here, but I, I think they're, they have big shoes to fill with folks that, that are leaving, we know that, but they're also already doing a great job and we're glad to have them on the team.
All I have is.
Dr. Barnes, I know we've probably mentioned it before, but where can we find those Neola policies to review? Can the, can the public get, get at those as well?
So at some point, yes. Right now, they're still in the early review phase. Part of that process is once, once we've looked at them as an administrative team, it'll get turned over to the board governance committee.
Okay.
And then from there, we go through the process of governance committee reviewing them, then having some public discussions about them and, and obviously sharing them out so that everybody, everybody can see them.
So they're not ready for our view yet?
No, there's a, I, I worked with the superintendent one time and he used the word ready for primetime, so they're not, they're not ready for primetime. But they will be, and then at that point, it'll be an opportunity for you and obviously the public and everybody who's involved to be able to review those and weigh in on what works and what doesn't.
Sure.
I think if folks want to get a general sense of what they look like, Eaton Reeser has them on the Eaton Reeser website, although that is for their organization, not ours, and so some things that are specific to a Reeser, but just, you know, the bones are the same in terms of the Neola policies.
To that point, Ms. Shannon, I would also point out that many, many, many districts, including our local area, use Neola policies, and they're all really pretty similar. So if you were to go to some other local school districts, Board of Education websites, you could see what Neola policies look like in general. And a lot of them are very, a lot of them are pulling language straight out of legislation, so a lot of, a lot of them will look very much the same as what ours.
Maybe this is a no duh, but they're also customizable to your district. Part of the reason they keep giving the caveat it's a fit Eaton Reeser or it fits the other local districts, and the reason we're reviewing them is because Neola creates the framework and organizational structure, but we review the policies that make them work here in Grand Ledge, and then you do the same.
Comments from the board?
Go ahead, Stubble, thank you, and I appreciate the real-time response. I believe it's more efficient, and I'm going to be happy to answer, I think it's important that we can share those answers. I'd also like to ask if we are prepared to speak to questions that we'd like to attend to. Kind of that, I'm sure it's written off the mouse for computer language, and I do know that's true, but it's not strong. That shared curriculum offered by the computer language and I do know that students have a lot of trouble with that second unit. So I appreciate the fact that there are other options that are provided. And I'm very impressed with my Ledge students because many times they not only take the two units, but they go above and beyond the requirement. I think it's important if we can answer that question.
So just so I'm understood, the world language question about switching out.
Yes, because my students have involved in asking about that as far as
Thank you. So, so some of that flexibility has been built into the Michigan merit curriculum, really since its inception. Opportunities to take a look at, at what a student's goals are, what a student's needs are and to customize that Michigan merit curriculum to a certain extent while still maintaining the structure of the, of, of the, the process so that kids are, are getting a good, well-rounded opportunity for graduation. So in Grand Ledge, we have made a commitment to world languages. Students here can take Spanish, French, or German, all from certified teachers. Like I say, in a lot of districts, that's not the case. They, we just don't have the staff or the program for it. So we're very fortunate that we have our great German partnership, for example, with Lona, the exchange program that's gone on since the mid eighties. And so while that flexibility is built into the Michigan merit curriculum, I think it's also important to note that maintaining that opportunity for students who, whose aptitude, interest, career goals require some Spanish or some French or some German, maintaining those programs is important as well. And our staff is, is obviously has a lot of expertise in those areas. We offer German down at middle school this year as well. So from my standpoint, the, the flexibility built into the Michigan merit curriculum is a good thing because it allows students to meet their own career goals, their own post-secondary goals, their own unique needs, while also maintaining a framework that ensures that kids are leaving our school with the right skills that they need to do whatever they want. So, so our intention, even with that implementation of that requirement would be to maintain our world language programs and to maintain those experiences for students because they are, they are very much needed for some students, not all. I mean, not every student needs to take French or not every student needs to take German. But for the ones that do, we should be able to offer that to them and provide that opportunity because we do have a strong program and that's been a longstanding practice here in our district and, and quite frankly, something that we pride ourselves on. And, and again, I, I mentioned the Lona program. That's something that nobody else around does. So it's a, it's a nice opportunity for kids. So as we look at Michigan merit flexibility, on the one hand, that is a good thing because it, it helps kids meet their own needs. But on the other hand, maintaining that level of framework, which the Michigan merit curriculum provides is a good thing as well. So when it comes right down to it, you can also use personal curriculums. So if there is something where a student needs something very different than what's in the Michigan merit curriculum, our counselors and administrators have the opportunity to work with parents and students to develop a personal curriculum to, to make sure that that experience is tailored to that student's individual needs. So I, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for Dr. Davenport, but I will say what I have found to be most successful in these circumstances is multiple reads. Because there is a lot, and I, I told you, we've been doing it since the spring. So if we just dump a whole pile of policy and say, approve this, that's not going to be very good, right? I mean, the, the whole point of this is to, is to make sure that everybody is well invested and well understood or well understands what it is we're trying to do with these policies and what's in them. And so, so again, I can't speak for Dr. Davenport, but I would say that, that I, in talking with him, the idea would be there'd be multiple opportunities to review and read the policies before having to vote on whether or not they're being approved.
My final observation and I also touched on special roles. I'm getting some of the same questions as I'm moving through community as well as in my role at LCC. And I think at some point it would be very helpful because I know that we did great work through Grand Ledge in the special ed area. Anytime we have a brand new student part of, or college or any other program. I'm very impressed with this. Not everyone knows the process. But at some point in the future, it's activated. Maybe it's really important for the board as well as the community to have a high-level presentation in terms of the process works versus how parents and community members might think it, it would be very efficient.
And I, I can say, and I, I don't want to speak for Wendy, but we, in our meeting this morning, we had that exact conversation. The idea that, that we need to do some of those things. So Wendy, if you want to just very briefly give an overview of, of your thoughts about process, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, can you hear me better now? Okay. I, I think it's important for parents to understand the process and why we do what we do. We had a conversation about a certain process today. I was asking, can we make this kind of an explanation about why we do what we do so that parents understand because they get mad about some things. So I think that you're spot on that when parents don't understand, it gives a negative impression of the district. And we don't want that. We want them to understand why we do what we do and have their, their feedback. And sometimes with that feedback, we can change a process if it, if it makes sense to do so. So I think being transparent with our parents helps them to help their children.
As I say, for my comments, I'll just thank everybody for coming tonight. I know at this time of July, there are generally other things to do. I will note for future topics that we have a board bond advisory meeting Monday, August eighth, five PM, saw in room one oh seven, and a work session Monday, August eighth at six PM right here. Next, I would entertain a motion to enter into closed session.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education move into closed session for the purpose of receiving confidential attorney client communication as per section eight sub one sub E of the Open Meetings Act, Public Act two sixty-seven of nineteen seventy-six, Haltberg versus GLPS, file number four two one seventy-two.
Moved by Ms. Shannon, seconded by Mr. Smith. This is a roll call vote. Dr. Barnes, would you be so kind?
Mr. Quina?
Yes.
Dr. Glasgow?
Yes.
President Shiffler?
Yes.
Ms. Shannon? Mr. Smith?
Five yays and zero nays. We will enter into closed session at six thirty-eight PM.